Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, into the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free and just. I will call.
Ms. Halling is here, Ms. Valentine.
Here.
Ms. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Jane.
Here.
Mr. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Sammy William.
Here.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Next, I'll entertain a motion approved the agenda.
Approved as presented.
Motion is their second?
Second.
Second, let's hold. Motion carries seven zero. Next is public announcements, recognitions, and upcoming events.
We have some good news out of the high school in just the last week. Nathan Skarman, who's a senior there at EHS, was awarded, I guess, or recognized as a commended student, which is part of the National Merit Scholarship Program. That's the first step to go on to a national semifinalist and then finalist, which we have had actually in the last few years. So Nathan's off to a good start there representing EHS. Tonight, there's 4K conferences, but Levi Leonard started out our rounds of parent-teacher conferences with conferences last week. I know that was a lot with homecoming week, so we'll adjust that in the future, but they did get those in last week. The high school is having their conferences tonight, the first round at least. We also celebrated School Custodian Appreciation Day last Thursday, was able to get around and see not only our first shift, but then by Friday, our second shift custodians as well, and they appreciated Culver's gift card from the district. We, I'm sure Eric would agree with me, coming in from a different district and seeing what custodial maintenance looks there. We have a great staff here, and especially at second shift, which is sometimes hard to find reliable people. We really have great people here in the district, appreciate all that they do. And again, that goes for maintenance and buildings and grounds as well. A little bit maybe slower pace to this week, having ended up homecoming week last week. There are a bunch of pictures that were posted earlier this week from Buff Puff, Powder Puff, some of the other activities at the high school. I do want to just recognize Kendall Butch, and he does a great job in the administrative team at trying to make this a district-wide celebration instead of just a high school homecoming week. And so last Friday, probably one of my favorite parts of the week was when the K through eight, actually, one through eight students went over to the high school in the middle of the day. You had Kendall eating some things, the coaches were there, the middle school band was there. It was, it was great, and I think then they feel part of the festivities. Of course, everybody's at the parade after that. This week is Wisconsin School Board Week, so on behalf of the administrative team, there's a little gift there of a variety of different candy bars. I think this board likes their chocolate, so hopefully you will appreciate that. And then I mentioned again that we've got parent-teacher conferences at the high school. Next week, one of our committees, the negotiations committee, will meet on next Tuesday, and we'll start to plan out a strategy or a way to approach negotiations with both the teachers and then our support staff union as well. Next week also, on Wednesday night, is the National Honor Society induction ceremony at the high school. Just in terms of the broader community, the Chamber of Commerce has their Fall Fest a week from Saturday on the 18th. And then on the 20th, there is our second Professional Development Day of this school year, so no school four students. Our staff is here, and during the end of that day, we'll have a presenter who I've seen a couple of times before named Dr. Justin Patchen. He is a national expert on cyberbullying, so we'll have a session with all of our staff. And then he'll be also here at 5:00 PM next Monday for a nighttime session for our parents and then any community members that's on our Facebook page, has been on a couple of times now, so we're excited to have him. If you have a child with a phone, you would want to see him because what he does, he is, all of his research is based on this, again, cyberbullying, so he knows what kinds of apps and things kids are on, and if they're positive, negative, the pitfalls of them, so he'll be able to tell you the most up-to-date information that's coming into him.
I have a question about that. Is he also like strategies for parents and teachers?
Yeah, more so for teachers on maybe what to report that kids might be talking about. For parents, he'll be very blunt, like, having seen him before, I think his advice is still the same. He says to parents, you should be able to monitor your students or your kids' phones. You should be able to go on, see what apps they have. You can do that through your service provider as well, so he's pretty blunt with parents about that. And then last but not least, two weeks from today, we'll have our budget hearing and then annual meeting, again, with the transition to the Evansville Examiner as the district's approved newspaper. You saw the budget in last week, that'll go in one more time, and then those agendas are all going in, so if you're a subscriber to the Evansville Examiner, that's all been in the paper and will be in again, updated numbers. Lot going on so far in October.
Thank you. Is there any other announcements or recognitions? If not, any public presentations? All right, moving right on to high school board represent, Danielle and Tessa.
Hi. I know it's been a couple of weeks, so I'm Tessa, and this is the Evansville School Board Reps. Thought we'd do a quick presentation. So of course, with last week being homecoming week, there was lots going on, one of the busiest kind of weeks of the year throughout schools. But there was still obviously a lot going on throughout the schools. Why not? So starting at Levi Leonard, the book fair started. Fortunately, when we were there, it was lunchtime, so we didn't get to see any of the kids exploring the book fair, but we talked to Mrs. Hamilton, the librarian there, and she said that the kids loved it, just looking around, kind of exploring it. And then as we walked around, there was lots of artwork. I think every single class had either something on the door or next to it or on the locker, so the kids loved doing, maybe they had little self-portraits of their lockers, so it kind of blends up a little bit, which is cool to see.
And then moving on to the tris, there were more students around that we were able to interact with. As we moved through the halls, we were able to merge into the fifth grade, fifth graders practicing their line and hallway etiquette on their way back to class after lunch. And it was fun, because we could see all, over all of them, we could see everyone that was going in and out, and it was just fun, give us a little memory of when we were in, back in line, line leaders. And then we visited Ms. Greavy and Ms. Burton's classrooms, and in both classrooms, they were doing work in their workbooks. In Ms. Burton's class, we talked to the students, and they were learning about personal narrative and how that applied to their own life. And then Ms. Greavy's class was reading Alice in Wonderland, which was the sophomore in high school's theme this year, so it was a fun little connection for us. And then the tris is getting into the holiday spirit with, by decorating the doors to the LMC as a giant pumpkin. And then up in the corner, we ran into Mr. Dobbs a couple of times, and he was very happy to take a photo with Tessa just to show the sub-support of our school board reps. And then as we made our way to the middle school, we realized that we had also come during lunch period, so there wasn't very many students around. But when we went up to the seventh grade hallway, we did see a whole bunch of our old teachers at lunch, and we just thought it was a cute little, like, all the teachers sit together during lunch and get to talk about their days and stuff, and we got to chit chat with them for a minute. And then on our way up to the fifth floor, we stopped by Mr. Wimmer's English class, and he was more than happy to help us get photos and tell them to pick out books and stuff. And they were just in there reading and doing the work. And then on our way back downstairs to the sixth grade floor, we spoke with Mrs. Schwartz, who was also very happy to pose for a picture when they were practicing mental division. And the students found that very fun to get in the picture and try and look at it.
And then lastly, moving on to the high school, obviously lots going on there. You can see all of the different hallway decorations, which is really big, big on some of the class of parts. See down the corner there, our girls' golf team made history, and they were the first in program history to move on to sectionals. That was this Monday. We competed over in Racine at Meadowbrook. We sadly did not move on to state, but it's such a cool experience to be kind of the first to move through that. I was on the team, so. Yeah, so we're homecoming stuff. You can go to the next side, and there's some more pictures. Our FFA took a trip to the Derry Expo. I heard that was lots of fun, just getting to see that. Lots going on there. It's an all-day event, so they were able to interact with other schools and then just all the activities going on there. Our homecoming court, Brinley and Tanner were our king and queen. And then on the corner, the pride paddle winners, that's where all the hallway and windows and flow and everything comes together to win the pride paddle. And for the second year in a row, Class 26 has won.
Under the leadership of Tessa and I.
Can I ask, what's the significance of the penguin in the student section?
I don't really know where that came from, to be honest with you. I mean, it's just, it's been to like every single game, it's just kind of a statement. It dresses up with the themes, I mean.
And this picture of the flying monkey is Ms. Olson, and I just wanted to include that because she's very adamant that she get her face on a flying monkey, and it was completely her idea. She's very enthusiastic in our hallway decorating process.
I think that's all we have. Any questions about anything? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, district administrator update.
Before I get to this, I just want to recognize, because we do let them know that we talk about this publicly before we send them out the recognition letter, and Paige does that after each board meeting, but we did have three donations come in in the last month. One was actually one that Ryan had asked about because it showed up on our receipts and he was asking about it. It actually came in on our donation board this time. So Ava Olson, she had a senior project over the summer where it was a coed softball tournament over the Fourth of July, and that brought in $2,060.39, which gets donated back. Yeah, so that's a lot, a lot of money going back to the high school softball program, so congratulations to her. And then as usual, Einer and Amy Flown had donated to the middle school music program. Typically, those donations follow their students that they have in, in the district. And then one other one that I wanted to recognize was a $500 donation from Base, Building Safe for Evansville. That's going to go purchase a software program called Mindwise, which is a suicide prevention resource for us. So thank you to those three donors for their recent donations just in the last month. And again, we send out that letter, especially for private individuals, if they can use that for their tax purposes as well. So, and we let them know, like, if you want to go see it on YouTube channel, you can watch us talking about it. This month, Paige, if you just want to scroll down to that, kind of the visual there, right at the end of September, we had our first chance to be able to compare our spring assessment scores with other districts. So we get these in the late spring and then into the summer, so that would be our forward scores for grades three through eight plus 10th grade social studies, our pre-ACT for grades nine and 10, and then our ACT scores for last year's 11th graders. And until you have comparison data, we can see what the scores are, but we aren't able to attach a lot of value or meaning to them. And then last, again, about a week and a half ago, we were able to go in into what's called Wise Dash and be able to go into every other district and see how we compared. So what you're going to see overall is a lot of green. Green is good in this case because in the far right column, if you see green, that means that we were above the state average for that particular test, getting forward, pre-ACT, ACT, and then that grade level, and then that content area in some of these cases. Anything in red is either below the state average, or it's in the bottom half of Rock County or bottom half of the Rock Valley Conference. So almost all green, which is, is good to see. Where you see the bright green is where our students, and there's a couple of categories here, either were first in the county or first in the conference, and we certainly didn't have that much last year. There are some areas where we do know that we have some work to do. Again, this is a year behind, so if you look at like, if it's a fourth grade score, that was really last year's third, third graders. And so you do see some things with English Language Arts on the forward that are concerning to us, some English on the high school end as well. Now our staff not only can see the scores, but how they translate into the, again, the conference and, and the county. I, I won't go into a lot of detail here because here's what's going to happen. We'll talk about this again in two weeks with our annual meeting and state of the district. And then at the beginning of November, Mark will do a deeper dive into that in his report on these assessment scores. The one thing I think I feel safe in saying is, if you're wondering what kind of an effect this will have on our school report card scores, I do know what those scores are now. They are embargoed, so we know what they are, but we can't share those publicly. You could probably make a safe assumption that seeing all of this in green is going to improve our school report card scores. We're actually excited about those, but won't be able to talk about them for another month, but it is translating over to those. We just can't say a lot about it at this point.
Question, the Rock, ranking Rock County in the Rock Valley Conference, are there, is it, is the Rock Valley Conference all of Rock County plus a few?
No. So in, 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 there's the Rock County schools, and if you go in...
I just noticed on ACT and reading, we got first in the conference, but third in the county.
Right, so there's a couple of county schools. Milton does usually pretty well. And then depending on it, Edgerton and at times Parkview, also a Rock County district, push us a bit.
But they're not in the conference.
Correct. Edgerton is.
Yeah, yeah.
Then when you get into the Rock Valley, I would say the ones that we always have our sights on, at least recently, East Troy has had really good scores of, of late, Edgerton of late, and then depending on the year, Monroe sometimes will, will creep up. You are going to see, McFarland is going to be an interesting one, and I'm not sure where their school report card scores will be, because I don't know those yet on, on anybody else's besides ours, but McFarland had really good school report card score last year. Their results here are not nearly there, and I'm not sure if there was a change, because they do have a large virtual school aspect to them, which makes them bigger and tend to pull their scores down. So what they sometimes report just on their own is, our kids do this well. When you add in our virtual school kids, here's our total score. So usually McFarland's, it's, the kids that they do have in district are, are, are great academic kids. Their virtual school kids tend to bring some of those down. But yeah, there is a difference. There's a little bit of crossover, but a pretty big difference between.
I mean, we, we're pretty consistent throughout.
And again, you'll hear a lot more about this. Our principals had these as soon as we got them, and again, trying to really dig in now, and all the things that are happening with, at, at the high school with Methodize and using that ACP or that Flex Time, Mark and Joanie are now working on potentially some iXL, which is a platform work for forward at the middle school that we may pilot yet this year. And then of course, you've got Bridges and, and CKLA still taking hold in, in those early grades. So I really think that we are set up, and again, I can't say much about school report card scores, but we're set up for success in the future. In terms of family community partnerships, the first newsletter went out. We've already had like 500 views on that, and the way that Canva works, for those of you that know it, know that you can see like unique views, and then, so there's, there are probably about 80 people who come back to it multiple times, but we've had about 500 views on that. Again, a great community partnership with the Care Closet, Becoming Better Neighbors, and Evansville Forward. Mark and I were out there to drop off some of the school donations, and they had a whole bed of a truck completely filled and continuing to fill it that was going to go to the Care Closet. And yeah, we mentioned homecoming, but if you are on that parade route, whether on Fifth Street or maybe down Main Street, it really is a community event. If you've never been over to Evansville Manor to see the residents get brought out for the homecoming parade, it really is a cool event. And the king and queen in a lot of those Jeeps will stop and have a little bit of interaction with our, with our seniors. And that's, it's, it's a great interaction. And then our, our kids are along the routes in, in different places. The, the last couple of things I wanted to mention are, with this first Professional Development Day, I, again, I'll give a lot of credit to Mr. Schwartz and our principals, because as an administrative team, we take a lot of pride and I think are very, a very self-reflective group. So when staff last year said, we don't find a ton of value in, in our professional development days, and then knowing what our scores were last year, we really looked in the mirror and said, we got to do some things differently. So just on that first, not only in August, but again, in the September day, on the 26th, I know Mark was leading some sessions. I was able to get around to three of the buildings, the high school, the middle school, and in those two, they were looking at those test scores, and then they were looking at, how do we better prepare our kids for these? AI is definitely in that mix in how we, how to save teachers sometimes, to again, create forward-like or ACT-like questions, and them being able to look at that. Mark and I had a conversation about the high school, because the high school staff, as we had presenters, was a little bit louder, but as I was kind of watching those interactions, it was really staff talking to each other about, is this what you're seeing? And they were talking about the scores. They certainly weren't being disrespectful at all. They were just really getting into those conversations with their table partners. And then even at Levi, was able to sit in on some of the conversations about our interventions and how to make those really worthwhile. So I do think there's going to, there's already a different tone to this year in terms of a focus on academics, and then how we better prepare our staff to, to work with our kids in the classroom. And I'm, I'm feeling that already. I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that, Mark. I know you've got another report coming up in, in a month or so.
Yeah, I just, you know, we kind of started in August talking about, not teaching to the test, that phrase tends to get thrown out, but preparing kids for tests. And I know in board meetings, we've talked about, what do we do for our kids around test anxiety? And like, any other things, the better prepared they feel, the more that goes away. And I feel like our, our staff has really grabbed onto that, really put a lot of time and energy in understanding what types of questions we're doing well on and which types of questions we need to work on and addressing that. So it, it's been good and great progress. We're going to keep at it.
One of the things I noticed about the data was exactly that. The third graders, well, I really doubt, because they have benefited from this last few years of the additional English preparations at that fundamental level. They ju, I, they're just not used to taking standardized tests. That's, I mean, that, that showed to me as like, okay, this red on the third graders, that's probably because, you know, they just need to learn how to do that. And I don't think it's something we should worry about or even necessarily prepare them by giving them extra standardized tests. But, but to, you know, just let them know, you know, don't worry about it. And I don't think we should even worry about those scores, but because the following years don't show that.
Seth brought up a good point. This was probably a month or two ago. What you will see in our data moving forward from year to year is we will stack those so that you can see what last year's third graders now did as fourth grade. So is it, is it a class that doesn't test very well, or is it something with curriculum instruction, those kinds of things? So you will see that moving forward, because we want to make sure that if it is anything that we can control in terms of how or what we're teaching, we're able to address that, and we'll be able to look for patterns better this way.
Well, similarly, you saw, you know, a reduction in, at the sixth grade level, because, you know, middle school, gosh. So it's, I, I feel like that those are, those are the kinds of things that can be expected. And there was a strange thing to me, and I don't know if anybody, maybe Mark can address this when you bring your presentation. It's odd to me that reading, lower than social studies, which depends entirely on reading comprehension and capability. So, to me, it was like, wow, look at how good they did in the social studies. It's like, I feel like we've always had a great social studies program and curriculum, but you'd think that we'd have better reading because it's all dependent.
Can I talk to quite a bit about the English Language Arts scores at the high school? Some of those are grammar-based, and so we were actually, we saw the reading scores were higher than the ELA scores at the high school. That was actually like, this isn't a bad problem to have, because you can almost immediately fix the ELA scores with a focus on that, where reading is going to be across the board. So that was something that we've already talked about and had those conversations at a building level.
I just wanted to say, I really appreciated, like, as a mom this year, Juliana came home with a note saying, like, she was going in her group meeting, like, we signed off on it. Getting it, like, the beginning of October and not being told in, like, December, which like, was so nice, because, like, we were able to have that conversation so early on and prepare, and then even, like, sitting down with Mr. Marty, with Isabella, he just, like, prepared us so much nicer. So like, having those conferences earlier, like, I know, like, we didn't have all the data at the table, but it was nice to at least have that conversation. So I appreciated that. So thank you for doing that.
The amount of mark, time that Mark has put in working with NextPath to have letters ready to go with parents has been a lot, so he, he won't give himself credit, but he and that, the interventionists and coaches have, were really working on that. And then again, Jess and Barb, at those levels, it was a very quick turnaround time between when the students were tested for that baseline and then putting those together and then having those meetings. It was a, again, the sooner that we can get kids the help that they need is great, but that's a, a lot on staff right away at the, at the beginning of the school year. So again, Mark and his team did a great job with that. Last but not least, in terms of operations, we are waiting for a response now that we have submitted. We had three different companies in the area that all work on either school or municipal projects, bid out our roofs, and there was some wide variety, anywhere from about $8.8 million on the low end to about $12.3 million. We actually had a fourth company in that was here for half a day, did all the work, and then never submitted a bid, which was disappointing, because we would have liked to see one more number. So when we find out how community insurance company responds to those, we will let them know. No, so what, what we agreed on is, we're going to, we're going to bid these out on the plans that we've approved, and we'll submit those to them. And typically, what's happened, like, with our outbuildings, as soon as we submit them, they will approve them and say, go ahead with this contractor. We, we just put those in yesterday morning, so I'm sure they're looking at them now.
Did we hear from the contractor that didn't submit a bid? Why?
It was actually, I, I won't say who it was, but it was actually a contractor that had asked for an extension for the whole group, and so we extended it out another week, and then they didn't put it in. There is a large bond that you have to have on these projects for this much money, and they had not secured the bond, even though they are a large company. They do most of their work in the Milwaukee area, but. The other thing that I just want to mention is the flu clinic. Paige does a lot of work on that. It's really a benefit to our, our employees and then their, their kids. They'll be in tomorrow, using a couple of different rooms, and able to get their flu shots here through the insurance. And again, they don't have to go to Walgreens or CVS or any place else. They can do that right here. My office is on the other side of that wall, and so I prepare myself for a little bit of crying from some young kids who are, who are here getting... Here getting the flu shot with mom and dad trying to make sure everything's okay.
Thanks about that too, is that it's not only our employees on the insurance, any employee can get a flu shot. Any employee and their spouse's children can get a flu shot through the clinic.
Very sensible.
That's fair. Next is TC Networks.
So you all know Griffin and then Jake is here as well. Tonight, you're gonna see two presentations. One from TC Networks, who is really our information technology provider for the district. And it's been that way for the last three years. And then you're also gonna hear from Go Right Way, who's been our transportation service for the last few years. And will be through two more school years, this year and, and next year before contracts are up and we go, go out to bid again. And so I thought. It, it's good at least a couple of times a year for the board to hear what they're working on. I can say like we work really closely with TC Networks. Eric and Mark do as well. Just on like my end, Griffin and I talk about like visitor aware. We've done a lot with Informacast. I think our, our new check-in system for visitors is much better than what it was. And now actually just today, if you take a look on our volunteer page, a page just about your webpage. Page Tao just updated that today. It's a really slick system now where it's one link. People can go on that wanna volunteer. It actually does a little bit of a background check with them. They can take their picture and submit that. And then that information goes directly to the building. So they know who's signed up. It'll be a great system for us and that's something that Griffin has really been helping with. We've also talked about like camera upgrades. When we've more recently found out there's certain cameras that aren't working, worked on that. And then I know they're not gonna present on it tonight, but there will be a transition into next year from Microsoft to Google. I know a lot of our staff is looking forward to Gmail instead of Outlook and that's something that they're working on as well. Other than that, I'll pass it over to Jake and Griffin for their presentation.
Thank you very much. As it said, my name is Jake Slabek. I'm the Senior Account Manager for TC Networks and the Acting IT Director for the School District. We also have Dan Olson. He is an onsite engineer. He couldn't make it tonight. And then, well, you guys know our System Admin and Tech Griffin. So TC Networks is headquartered in Platteville. I'll just give you guys a little background really quick. We provide a range of services, including managed services, which for ECSD includes myself, Dan and Griffin. We support thirty-two managed service districts with the company. We also do network security integration. We call that NSI. They handle cameras and door access. They were actually just here last month, helping with some cameras and they did an amazing job helping in fixing and. Turning and moving and just a lot of different things for us. So it was great. And then other things we do offer are just general engineering services and cybersecurity solutions. We do offer those to the district as needed. We began our partnership here in Evansville in July of twenty twenty-three. We're entering our third successful year of collaboration. Thank you to the admin team. We'll also have time for questions at the end, but if anything you guys have questions about as we're presenting, please let us know. I'll turn it over to Griffin, who will share more about what we've been working on in the district.
I think Nate stole a little bit of our. Yeah, we just touched on a staff diverse rotation a little bit here. So we've kind of had a five-year rotation as we cycle through buildings. Done a mix of different solutions throughout the past couple of years with some workshops and docs for staff in different areas. We've been adopting Chromebooks as well. Just this last year with some staff feedback from McKenna that kind of lead us in the direction of desktops plus Chromebooks. That's the direction we move the new hardware this summer there. Next year will be the elementary school. So through the five year to kind of break up the high school. Kind of lump in desktops for some of the student labs in here too and have a large purchase to do at once.
Really helps Eric with budget planning too.
Do our best. We spend a lot of money.
Poor Eric.
We've both done some classroom AV updates over the last couple of years. Summer of twenty twenty-three, we did a refresh throughout the back trits and at the high school. Those are some new laser projectors that we installed in most classrooms. Benefit of lasers and also a longer life span typically with those devices than your typical bulb and lamp projector you normally think of. Then at McKenna, we just recently did a refresh this summer alongside their new staff hardware. Refresh for lamps for them there, just brighter images on those projectors, cleaning of filters, just to kind of keep things running efficiently before we have to look at replacement in a couple more years. Then another project we've tackled since we came on here is Grove Campus Wireless. So that was an E-rate affiliated project. Worked on that. So we, old APs were going beyond their manufacturer end of life and end of support. That's what we looked at planning that project. Access, wireless access point. So those new extreme, that's the brand that we ended up selecting through the bid process. Those are a great efficient management interface for us too, where we can actually do web management out of for updates and identify issues, troubleshooting and things like that.
And it came at a great cost.
I have a question. Is access points like a one-time thing or we pay like per month or like what does it do?
Yeah, so there, so actually there's the one mounted up there. You can take a look at it. Kind of blends in with the ceiling. One time upfront for the hardware. Sometimes they'll have different supportive agreements. We were able to bundle in, I believe, a five-year with this purchase. I'm still not that five-year support agreement's up. There'll be some more annual cost or another.
But not like a monthly?
No, it's just like a wifi network that integrates with, to extend our network.
Typically, it's upfront for the hardware and then supporting maintenance is the cost.
If we didn't do a five-year, it would be a yearly cost.
Okay, got it.
I've also done some network switcher placement for some edge switching, which is kind of what the network connections to rooms like this and different classrooms. Both some core switching, which is kind of what all those connect back to. Those were again, up for cycle based on some end of life and end of support agreements for the existing hardware. And those all work to connect all the different devices we have throughout the district. So cameras, access points, desktops and classrooms. Clocks like the one in here and the speakers for notification and everything as well. So they do have some room for expansion as well. So like Nate mentioned, cameras are a conversation moving forward. There's usually room for updated cameras with a power draw or anything like that. So. These we were also able to get a five-year. No recurring costs for, for a couple more years.
I'm all about saving them.
We try. And this is where Nate really stole my thunder. Like you mentioned, it's a replacement for that Raptor visitor system. So that was something we kind of discovered during our safety committee discussions last year. When we saw all the different things they could offer, we were pretty excited about it. Hope you can bring it all into one umbrella. So. I don't know if you guys saw, maybe when you did your boardwalk, there kind of an iPad out front at each front office. It's a pretty smooth process. Yeah, we think it's worked out pretty well. Obviously, we're still learning these things. We're actually diving in.
Seth and I were bad. We didn't bring our license. We're like, oh, we need this. Sorry, I didn't mean to call you.
It has that integration with Informacast. It's something we already do for valves and notifications and everything. So if there's anybody who doesn't have a, you know, fly come up as a banned visitor. There's some notifications that can be triggered automatically.
A little black sound goes off.
Just for a select group, luckily not everywhere. We could if we wanted. Other modules.
Seth forgot his ID.
Maybe that was deliberate. I'm those other modules that tie in or some other useful things for us like the, the tip line that Nate's mentioned in the past, I know. Also some things for drills in the future potentially, unification as well. It's another big one. ClassWise was a service we switched to, I think, two years ago as well. That one's been great for classroom management. We've got some good feedback on that one. So it's allow, allows everybody during class time to do, kind of get an idea of what the kids are doing at the right position. When there's desktops in. So I think the best feature with that one that I know, I've talked to a lot of people about is they call it Focus. That lets staff make kind of a custom list of resources, what, what they just want allowed during class time. So.
This is the one where like you can see what they're looking at.
See the screen. It has some other features like messaging between students and things like that as well.
Can I jump in there, Griffin? Periodically, Jake and Griffin will be at our administrative team meetings on Wednesday mornings. And just this last year, there were some things that I think some of the principals didn't know that ClassWise could do. And when they expressed that to Griffin, like, yeah, we, here's how you do it or here's what we can turn on. And that was helpful that they could go back to their staff and say, we were having a problem with this. Here's how it's already fixed.
Yeah, we were able to use it to kind of make a penalty box. It's kind of what a lot of companies will call it. So we made a sort of. They don't have a direct penalty box. They use some different wording, but able to set the.
I don't know if this is helpful or not, but like at the college quarterly, I ask my IT services to do like a. Update of IT reminders of what they can do so anyone can join because there's all the time where I'm like, I didn't know you could do that. And like they just do like reminders for us because things like that, I would have never known that.
Yeah, that's something that we, we've kind of talked about a little bit. Try to find a good format.
Yeah, like and even like they just recorded. So if you can't come, like I can just watch it, but there's like things like Excel. I'm like. Oh yeah, I took an MBA course once. Yeah, I don't remember.
I will say some of the different teaching staff within the building, as they leave those new staff. Discussions as the year comes back together. I know they put a lot of resources together. I hope to share some different documents we have with them.
You guys all have the brains of Jesus.
And then student Chromebooks is another big one for us. So we typically do a third grade and eighth grade replacement cycle. Devices with the vendor we typically go with. We already get a five-year one. So that really helps us extract the most out of those. Then after that five years is up, when they end up turning them back in again, we'll typically purpose them at the lower grade levels or for some other uses like a loner device. And then once they kind of reach the end of that useful life's, life for us, we'll take them and sell them if a company's interested in buying them back. Or they'll just have to cycle through a simplified recycler. This last summer, we were also able to do fourth grade, which was great. They had to keep everything running on a smooth rotation. I gotta give a huge shout out to the library team for that. They are a huge help. So over the summer, as we come back into school and throughout the entire year too. They had a lot of the moment issues with Chromebooks with students, help swapping them out and do a lot of the things like that. I'm gonna kick back over to Jake here for a few more things and some future plans.
Thanks, Griffin. For server security improvements, we've been, we've been rolling out CrowdStrike EDR, which is endpoint detection response. Just another layer of protection on our devices. We started with our servers and we're hoping to get that out to other devices as well. We also use a membership called MSISEC. They do a lot of different things. The MDVR is malicious domain blocking and reporting, which is just a service that automatically blocks network traffic to known malicious websites. So they're doing that for us. So then it's already pre-blocked. We don't have to worry about it. We also get regular vulnerability scans from them and frequent alerts on known security threats. They'll actually email us. So we've got that set up on a couple of different emails. We don't miss that. So if it's something we need to manually intervene, intervene on, we can. We also wanted to touch on the youth apprentice program. They work the majority of their hours over the summer to help complete a variety of different IT-related projects. But they do also assist year-round as they are available. The program offers two different pathways. IT Essentials, I think of that as kind of boots on the ground, hands-on tech support and troubleshooting. And then the other one is IT Networks Systems and Security. They assist with some network related stuff. We don't let, we don't give them keys to the castle, but they do get experience with everything. So they can see how, how that side works. We are excited to share. We are still actively having students with that program right now. There's two of them currently. Do you have a strategic plan? We're hoping to use E-rate for that. E-rate covers sixty percent of the cost of our purchases. That are approved projects and the district pays the other forty percent. The ones that we have coming up, we're hoping the wireless and firewall upgrades, we can get done over the next five years because in that timeframe, they'll go to end of life. So they'll have to be replaced. And we also recommend continuing with the TC Networks agreement. Hoping that that collaboration can continue. And then also just maintaining the internet service through E-rate as well to keep getting that discount on the internet service for the district. A couple of projects that are outside of E-rate that we can't use those funding, funds for. Ideally, all these projects would be done over the course of the five years together, but the phones are over ten years old, the actual physical handsets. And we also are exploring cloud-based options for the phone system. So again, that's something we'll probably bring you guys with more updates as we're looking into that and that comes to fruition. All systems on the server, so the server cluster project are critical to the daily operations. Any upgrade would improve support, security and uptime, just to make sure everything is always functioning. Our main goal is to maximize funding, strengthen infrastructure and ensure reliable, secure technology across the district. That's what we're hoping we're here for. So any questions?
I, I just want to say like, so, so for, for our staff. If you ever have Skyward down or you have the internet down. Those are major concerns, especially with how much is technology driven. And there's very few times that. One or both are, are down here in Evansville and that's a credit to TC Networks because, you know, you, you don't want your. Sixth grade math teacher to go into a lesson thinking this is what I'm gonna do today. And the internet's down, they don't have it. So they've done a great job with that in the last couple of years.
Thank you. This is Go Right Way.
Yeah, so Brittany and Jim are here from Go Right Way. And again, they are our partner in transportation. And Brittany's report, which she'll take you through, I'll just give you an overview of it. But of course, we've got our morning and afternoon routes. If you ever wonder like, what the heck is those buses doing in the middle of the day? Those are our 4K routes. So they're bringing in afternoon sessions, taking home from the morning. And then we have quite a bit of specialized transportation. So this would be some of our students that have IEPs. That need a different type of transportation rather than a regular bus. And then last but not least, Go Right Way also does all of our athletic transportation, both for middle school and high schools. Not only sports, but extracurriculars as well, depending if we have to go someplace for honors band or honors choir or. State soul and ensemble, those kinds of things. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brittany and Jim.
We even do wrestling overnights too, holidays too. I just wanna do it. We're gonna do a little bit of everything. So I'm glad to report this year has been, went off the hitch, has been fantastic. I couldn't be more proud of not only the community support for our drivers, but the drivers themselves. Didn't take us long to get back in the saddle of things to, you know, not driving for a few months and then getting back new kids. We had to make some adjustments because we've got some new areas in which we haven't really been transported before because the district is growing. And we're back there back to baseline right away. It's just like it was, you know, a few weeks into school last year. Routes are running like normal, dropping off like normal. We still have the same ten large bus routes. That cover not only our 4K kiddos in the morning, but our rural and some in-town stops as well. And then as Nate mentioned, yes, we do have two specialized transportation routes. We're really excited. Last year, we brought on our Route eleven, which we consider a shuttle bus. And this year, we are excited to have been able to bring on a second. So this will allow these, these students who were traditionally being transported in a van. To now be able to be transported in a vehicle that is also with other students. They also get to take this vehicle on field trips with them, with classmates. So it was more an inclusive option. So I'm really excited we were able to do that. Yeah, I guess as far as athletic trips go, yes, we do a lot of athletic trips and extracurricular trips. I don't get to join in on the fun, but right now it is. Trips to busy barn, fire departments and of course athletics. I, I, I feel, you know, or what we've been able to do for the district. We've increased, been able to increase just because of the need, the route interfering charters for athletics from twelve of last year to twenty-three. Just to kind of give you guys a little bit of a background, like, you know, obviously the bus driver shortage is really a thing. And some districts, you know, they can't accommodate the route interfering. And so by route interfering, it's. Something that needs to be taken at two o'clock when we're hopping in a bus. On most occasions, it can be like a one. The athletic department has asked for, you know, up to three, sometimes four, if we can make it work. And we, or Kendall and I, or has worked very well with me to make sure that we can get the kiddos where they need to be, when they need to be. Our, as far as the hiring side, we have a lot of movement in our location. We have a huge training board. I'm lucky enough to have on staff. Three trainers. So when we do bring on drivers and do offer different kinds of options between like paid training and then obviously behind the wheel and getting your CDL. I have three drivers. One of them is actually a now retired sixth grade teacher. So each teach at a different level. We can get them in quickly. We have actually one that will be joining us next. We have actually one that will be joining us next week, um, and a couple more that are coming through the process, so. Um, and it's really exciting to see that a lot of them are um, Evansville faces, so I'm really excited to have them out and about in the community.
Questions?
Yeah, I guess, um, some of these, seems like some kids are spending a lot of time on a bus. I know we eliminated two routes, would adding routes back shorten some of the time that kids would spend on a bus? Or is that just in the nature of how spread out our district?
It can, and the district does continue to grow, so like, I'll say just from the routing um, aspect. So one of the areas that I'm seeing, um, or actually, I should say, two of the areas I'm seeing grow the most are um, actually kind of towards like uh, one oh four Holt Road out that direction. So we've seen that grow, um, obviously like Union and fourteen. Um, I did mention to Nate and them the other day that I know I feel like we're hopefully gonna get a huge, it sounds like maybe a big expansion out like, do out by our Noah's Ark, um, location as well. The biggest thing eh, is obviously we deal with a lot of hazard zones in our area. So um, I've driven a lot of these routes myself, Jim drives a lot of these routes ourselves, and we are huge on safety, especially when it comes to like two thirteen, A fourteen. People just don't stop, um, for our reds out there, it's like they don't see them and.
Live on fourteen, I had my kids get on the bus and cars would be speeding past.
Yep, a- and it's nerve-wracking for, you know, a parent, it's nerve-wracking for us as drivers too. So a lot of those stops too, eh, eh, kids are on a little bit longer, but it's because we've made like safer accommodations. So like, all the kids on fourteen are dropped off door side, they're not allowed to cross. Two thirteen is the exact same way, and sometimes it's not the easy route, or you know, the route goes up, sometimes that route has to, you know, venture out a little bit. You know, obviously over time, yes, the addition of routes, I mean, yes, would help. But you know, right now, I think the drivers, I have a fantastic team that's doing the best at.
Yeah, awesome, I, do you know, um, how is it that go about putting in like a school bus sign on a street? You know, you see those signs that say like, school bus stop ahead, or it just has the picture, who's responsible for that?
So I do have a parent, and I'd have to ask how he went ahead and did this, but he did this for us on M, kind of out by Elsivia Plant out there. Um, and it was a pull to the county, and I think his brother worked for the county, I believe is what he said, and those just popped up. Yes, there's a lot of those places, and I love it, I, I, and I appreciate that. So I, I, I'd have to ask him and then I can give you the answer.
It's just a town, it's a town request.
Yeah, I think it depends to what road, so if it's a state highway, a county highway, those, that's, and we could always use support from school boards when it comes to those things.
Put more of those in, that would make.
You can ask your um, alderman, they usually will then can take it, or you could just go right to your town and they'll either tell you if they have jurisdiction or not.
I just wonder if there's like a resource we could put together for parents as to like how they could better advocate for this stuff. I remember when we lived on fourteen, I asked a number of different people and they were like, we're not really sure, you know, so.
Yeah, I think it just depends where you live.
We have been teaming up a lot too, um, so um, with Dane County Sheriff, um, we've had them go out and sit in those hotspot locations. Obviously Evansville here and Rock County has helped us a lot. Um, I think for a while there, Rock County Sheriff was showing up at my house every, almost every single day to collect a, 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 a turn-in, a write-up that we had to then had to be turned in. And I think um, the more and more like we can get out, like this, this afternoon I was personally driving and I hit like an M location, and um, I put on my yellows and the person thought it was a red, and they hit their brakes so hard that the car like veered in the ditch and I'm like, oh no. And we're to that point where we don't know that, we're, we're not knowing what the difference between slow down and actually stop means, so it's, eh, we're working on it.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Can I ask, um, what, uh, do, how do you solicit feedback from parents and stuff to get uh, get input on like what they like or struggles that they have with the, the route?
Yeah, so I think I'm an open book. Um, I, I have a lot of parents that will shoot me an email, um, give me a call, I'm free game to hear what anybody has to say, I'm whether or not eh, eh, there's something we can do about it or something we can't. Um, I think everything, we're always looking at making adjustments and, and changes. I've had parents that are like, I don't want my kid, you know, this isn't a good area, okay, well, why isn't this a good, you know, good area? Okay, I'll stop out and take a look, yep, sometimes it works in their favor, or sometimes it's like, if I do this accommodation for you, now I'm gonna have to do it for fifty other families in the district and that can cause a effect. But I feel like um, I'm very easy for a parent to reach out, good, bad, or ugly.
I email her.
I was gonna say, I was gonna use, I was gonna say, I, I've had, I, I do, I, I have taken feedback.
I think it was nice having you at the table, um, at open house, it was nice, uh, cause like even like my kids knew who you were. Like, I don't know if you do that at the other schools, like, it's nice because obviously the kids are young, they need to like see you. I don't know how, I only have younger kids, so I can't speak for the older kids yet. But it was nice having you there because they had that connection, but yeah, I can say that it's nice being able to email you. She's not lying, she'll tell me if it works or doesn't work, not just because I'm here. But yeah, I think it's a, it's a difference from where we were at, I mean, obviously as a parent, I've always called out my kids, I love my children, but I know when they're telling me a lie and when they're not, right? Like, so there was like this time of like, Juliana, Bella, you're telling me half the story, let me talk to Brittany, you know, like, um, and I just, I wonder, uh, you know, I always ask my kids, you need to sit on your tush at, you know, on the bus. And so I noticed on one of these points, we were talking about behavior and I, I hope behavior is becoming a better thing. And I see we've had some people sitting on the bus, I haven't seen anything on Facebook, so congratulations.
You know, I have to say in that regard, again, we did make some changes this year, and there's many things. We have a lot of neighborhoods, um, where they are, um, I like to call them pod kids, and there is like zero comfortability, um, like, so like you get a bunch of random kids on a bus and they're like, oh, they're a little like shy, you get like, some of these are like up to thirty P or thirty kids stops that all play with each other, they see each other in school and whatever. And yes, they have no problem doing some times out of occasional smackdown on the bus. I have to say, it's, we, we have made revising a bit of the routes this year, we've kind of shifted them out. So like each, kind of each route has like a, a bigger stop to try and try to have it. You're still gonna have your issues and kids are going to be kids. But I feel overall this year, in the minimal incidents we've had, I shout out to, you know, your admin team because they've been wonderful partners and wrapping things up and getting questions and working with me. And I, like I said, it's, it's been a really great year.
Can I jump in real quick? I, I do wanna brag about Brittany and also the admin team, so I've driven five different routes in Evansville this year. And the very first time I drove a route, I was expecting, it was, I was expecting behavior issues because typically they'll see a sub-driver and not know that I'm the Brittany's boss and, but the behavior on the bus was phenomenal, like I instantly came back, praised the driver for just how well she had trained the kids and and then the next route, Brittany says, hey, I need you to jump into this route. So every route that I've driven this year, the behavior on the buses, like I haven't had to do anything above and beyond. And being out there, I drive Evansville every afternoon just to free up a driver to help another district that is short drivers. And I, I have not, I don't think heard a boss say, hey, I gotta pull over because I have an issue. Which tells me a lot, that even on the other routes that I'm not on, there's some really good things happening this year. Uh, which is kudos to her and the, the, the thing she's teaching her drivers in her drivers' meetings and uh, her leadership as well as the support of the district admin team.
I tell the kids as friends that I gave all of their mom and dad's Brittany's full number and email. Actually, your kiddos asked me tonight, Ms. Brittany, what are you doing tonight, anything fun? I said, I'm going to a school board meeting, and they asked and I said, you have a meeting once a year, why are you meet with your mom, just talk about your boss behavior? And they're like, we've been good! So no, I, we, you guys, you guys do have, um, like I said, the kiddos.
This year's been refreshing.
Thank you. Next is uh, Third Friday Count.
Start out with, you know, news that we, we don't always like to see. We are down forty-three students from a year ago at, at this time. And I did give the board access to um, a UW population lab study that was done in two thousand twenty-two, um, that did show a slight um, gradual decline in enrollment. What we're experiencing is, I think, just a more sudden drop. I, I do think now we will begin to level out a little bit. But when, if you look at that study, um, which the board commissioned again in twenty-two, uh, it looked like we were gonna be at about sixteen hundred and fifty-one. I use the kindergarten model, there's a, there's a baseline model, a five-year model, a three-year model, and kindergarten model. Um, when Eric and I have worked together in the past, the kindergarten model has always seemed to be the most accurate over time. So really, this year is pretty simple. You graduate a class of one forty-five, and then you basically have a class of about one oh five, replacing it into four K. So that's where your drop is. Otherwise, you do see um, about half of our grades are up, anywhere from two to seven kids, and then about the other half of our grades are down about one to six kids. And then you've got two grades that stayed uh, about, about the same. The positive thing, uh, if there is one in, in a decline in enrollment, is we do have a exemption. So what the state does try to do, one of the other things that they do in terms of funding, is if they see that you're losing students, they know that there's funding tied to students, that's why we do the Third Friday Count in September and the Second Friday Count in January. So in, rather than take that funding away, and then it really starts to become a domino effect where, okay, now do we have to cut staff, or do we have to cut other programs? They really do give you some time to buffer, and this year, there's about a half a million dollars in aid that we're receiving in that exemption. So that's extremely helpful. Part of what, by the way, uh, Callie Day is awesome. You know, Eric and Mark and I work with her every day in different capacities, a lot of what she does is special ed-related, but because she's the registrar, she is dealing with um, enrollment. Uh, it's, it's amazing to know all that she knows, again, not being in every building, but being in her office. I, I mentioned homeschool, uh, making calls to them. Just today, I think I had three interactions with Callie about, is she aware of a family? And almost always, she's aware of uh, a family in, out, homeschool, private school. So she does a fantastic job, she's put all these numbers together, and then again, this has to be submitted to the DPI, and then DPI will sometimes red flag something that they don't think is either right. It's very interesting now, you cannot really lose kids because there's a number associated to them, their, their Y's ID number. And so if they move from one district to another, that's tracked through the state. If they go from Evansville to homeschool, or homeschool to Evansville. The only thing that we don't track very well, or can't track very well, is if a student goes to a private school. So you'll see that Callie's got some numbers for private school, they're just grayed out because we can't track that very well through um, through the Department of Public Instruction. One note I think everybody knows, but in order for us, us to be able to count a student and to get funding for them, they have to either be here on the count day, and then either a day before that day, or a day after that day. They can't move out of the district in that timeframe. Uh, the other thing that you see is, most districts don't do this, but I think it's very helpful for the board. On the other uh, attachment, Callie does break down like, how many kids that we do have in Jedi program. Again, the district invests in that, I know Melissa's talked about the value of that in the past. To me, and we have these conversations, especially at the middle school and high school, Jedi is a game changer for us because not only can we be a much bigger high school in terms of what we can offer students, if there's something that we don't offer that they can then get through Jedi, they can stay here locally in Evansville and get that full experience. The other pieces, you see a slight tick up in Jedi, um, just with our budgets, the way they were in the last couple of years, we've said no to a lot of students. We are able to say yes, there's certainly a criteria that I've shared with the board on what we approve and why. Uh, but that does play a big role for us. Edgenuity now, I think we've really just got down to the um, alternative ed program. Other things that you can see in there again is homeschool students, part-time homeschool students, and then any homeschool students that are involved in extracurriculars. And then again, private school uh, students as well. Uh, having talked to our homeschool families, um, the positive thing about that is because they can take up to twos, two classes at a time, um, and still experience our public schools. My impression is always, the more that, of those classes that they take, oftentimes that's gonna win them over to say like, hey, this is a really good experience that we're having, why don't we bring them over? And you generally speaking, start to see that happen more in middle school and high school, where it gets tougher for parents to teach upper-end curriculum, math, science, uh, and so some of the opportunities that they have. Um, and then very good news in open enrollment. What I, what I wanted to point out is, um, this is the fewest number in the last nine years that we have going out. So only a hundred and nine out, and then the plus number is the largest it's also been in those nine years. For Eric and I working on numbers, really you can take that and in general terms, multiply that by ten thousand. So when you have a plus twenty-eight, you can look at two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in general, getting close to three hundred thousand dollars. That is coming into the district, um, because of that positive uh, number. The thing that I want to point out is traditionally, because we, we don't like to change this document because it's historical, some of our open enrollment was going, which would make sense, to Janesville, Oregon, and then Albany. But now that has really um, uh, switched, you're seeing some of our open enrollment more out to Edgerton, Milton, and, and Parkview instead. Again, overall, uh, we'll continue to track that, I, you know, you hear Brittany talk about um, growth on the west side, some of the developments that might be planned, that's why I do uh, go to the economic development committee meetings when I can because I get to see um, what um, permits are being taken out, and what that might impact us, and even talking to some of the builders. I do think that if there was more land opened up and there were more new houses uh, built here, we would draw those in. The other thing, again, I can't say a lot, but you saw all the green on our test scores. You're gonna, I think, be happy with where our school report card scores land. The more competitive that we can be with those, and the higher rank that we'll have in the county and in, in the conference. And then those scores that do go out to like niche.com and to greatschools.com, um, those don't change right away, but over the next couple of years, I think you are gonna see that even the niche and the great school scores uh, begin to change. Uh, that not only has an impact on our open enrollment in and out, but also on uh, somebody that can work, let's say in Madison, or work in Janesville, or work um, in the Verona area, but maybe they want to live someplace else. I think we are a perfect size for that because, um, again, our high school is big enough to offer anything that you could get anywhere else. But then we really do know our kids, we, we know them by name, we know them by sight. Just going over to the high school and oh, uh, Mark does this from time to time too. And, and standing with Jeff and Kim every morning as they're greeting every single student that comes in, and they do know every single kid, even going over at lunch and watching those interactions, um, you can see that they do know all of our kids, which is a different experience than you might get in a lot, much larger district like O- Oregon, or Verona, or, or Janesville.
I have a question, so Edgerton, I understand, because we're very comparable to Edgerton. Parkview's or Friedville, right?
Right.
So my question here is, kind of drive through or, I'm like, just trying to picture it, like, what is the, what is the draw there? I'm picturing it's much smaller than that.
Part of that is they do have a virtual school there now.
Okay, so that's the draw?
Yeah, it could be, but what we've really been working on in Mark is in a lot of these meetings as well. When, and, and it is a, it is a mind shift for some of our, like, high school counselors, our high school staff, is if the, you know, typically we'll say like, uh, you know, not, online isn't for everybody. And we'll try to, if we don't think it's gonna be a success, coach them out of that and say, let's try a class on Jedi, let's try two classes on Jedi. But when it comes down to it, and it's something that the parent is adamant about, or I'm gonna go to McFarland, or I'm going to go to Parkview, we, in the least last two years have said, let's hear the parents out and their concerns. We said, rather have them be an Evansville student and, and enrolled in Jedi, rather than leave the district for McFarland or, or.
You, you don't feel like there's anything specific, you're just having a hard time with the.
Yeah, the only other ones, and we've talked about these with the um, open enrollment, when you got to um, approve those applications, is having made all those calls, sometimes it really is, uh, for Parkview, it would really be all okay. For Parkview, it would really be a location issue or maybe a daycare issue, not a work issue. To Janesville and Oregon, oftentimes it's a work issue. To the smaller communities around us, it's usually a daycare issue. Like Grandma and Grandpa live here, or culture to drop off in daycare.
We'd have been enrolled into Madison when our son was in four K, just because my mom lived in Madison.
That makes sense to me. I was trying to think, like, driving-wise, like, because, you know what, I'm just like thinking, what is that way? You know, like, I was like, what, what's the drive, you know? That makes sense.
Question, I imagine that the strength of our youth, youth apprenticeship program will draw kids in over time. Is there any way to track that or to get information?
Track it, not yet. But I know Mark and I have had, with Hannah Wellnitz on board now, some of the things that she's already doing in giving our kids exposure, like, some of the big events that you'll see, like Blackhawk Tech had an event, JP Cullen had an event. Hannah's certainly involved in those. Where they put their timing is, was right during homecoming week, so some of our kids would have missed some of that. But I think Hannah will be an excellent resource in terms of promoting that. The other piece of this is what we do for our own self-promotion. Again, depending on, again, I know where our school report card scores are, and we're happy the direction we're going. I don't know where that will rank yet. If we get to a point where we're the top school in Rock County and the top school in the Rock Valley, which I really don't think we're going to be far from very soon, I could envision for not a lot of money, you saw Parkview do this, Crystal's probably aware of this, but putting up, coming out of Janesville before you get into Evansville, you put up like, the Evansville Community School District's the top school in the, in the county, top school in the, in the, in the conference. Same thing coming in from Oregon. As much traffic is on fourteen, again, my experience tells me that if there's still a small-town feel, which Evansville certainly has, but the scores are there, you're going to see, hopefully, people look at us for purchasing a home and bringing their kids here, but also the open enrollment. And youth apprenticeship would definitely tie into that.
You know, that's something that, like, as a board, we've invested in. It'd be good to see what ways that's benefiting the district.
I just want to point out, so nine years ago, we had a net negative forty-seven. And we had already, five years prior to that, started to implement many different solutions to this, including Jedi, including four K, including, geez, I, I can't even remember all of them. But I was on the open enrollment committee during that time. We had people calling over the summer, trying to find out what, you know, trying to identify what percentage of the people we could have somehow served in a better way, and how could we have done it? And then, nine years ago, when it was, we were at this nadir of, you know, multiply forty-eight.
Move the other direction.
Thousand dollars. And now we're, you know, we've, we've literally gained a hundred. And it's, it's so exciting.
Yeah, as our enrollment has, you know, decreased in the last couple of years, that open enrollment number has certainly helped. The next piece of this, Mark and Eric and I have talked about it, talked about it with Jess Erdol, is at some point, if the state looks like they're going to fund full-day four K, would be the space for that, and then the funding that would come along with that, which also helps then our enrollment.
It's so funny, because they've talked about this for how many years?
Yeah, there's a, there is an attitude in the state legislature right now that's a parent problem, not a school district issue. And I really do think, yeah.
It's so old-fashioned.
For us, I think we do a great job of having all the four Ks in our buildings. I think we do a great job with them. And would allow us, especially everyday, all-day four K, to get that jumpstart with, again, moving up to kindergarten for second, third grade.
Helping our reading scores, helping our math scores.
The one thing I want to ask, and it's not for discussion now, but for us to talk about as we talk about these things. We keep, you know, talking about like growing our district and things like this. But we also are talking about, how do we keep our small town? We can't have both. And so, we have to like, talk about making a decision between elevating our school district, but also saying, are we the small town we want to be? We, we cannot do both. And so we can't keep putting the same thing in the same sentence. We're, that's just not possible. And so like, us as a board need to decide, what, what are we doing? And I don't have that answer. But we keep saying the same thing in the same sentence, and they don't match. In my, in my perspective, I'm just saying. I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying, what does that actually mean? I don't know.
Imagine we could project capacity for our district with our kind of resources, and figure out like, this is how many students we could accommodate at each school. And like, if we move past that, then that's a whole different conversation.
I'm just saying, I don't even know if that's our right to say what a small is. Is that the public's right? Is that our, I don't know. I'm just saying, later discussion. We should probably stop saying what it is, because we don't really know what that is.
I think that's a, that's a bridge we can cross when we get to it, because we're not there.
No, 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 that's why I said later discussion.
So see, as Melissa said, that, you know, nine years ago, we were three hundred total enrollment higher than we are now. So at least we have that much space.
Yeah, yeah.
Could be a small town that we were in nine years ago.
Absolutely.
Good point.
And also, the, the. Forgot what I was going to say.
Can I ask if you have any other insight about the, the private school numbers? I know you said it's kind of a mystery, but it's, you know, I see the pre-K through eight drops to zero all of a sudden, and then high school is highlighted and jumped to eleven a little bit. Is there any more insight in what's going on there?
You, you mean why we don't, yes, the gray, the high school one, we typically haven't lost a lot of kids. I will say, and I won't, I won't name them, but there are some new private schools in the Madison area that have offered sports for the first time. So some of our families that are, that religion and faith are very important to them, maybe we would have kept them before because sports are so important. Now you see some of these high schools that are still pretty small, but are willing to invest in athletics. And not that athletics are everything, but that wasn't an option unless you were going to go to, let's say, Edgewood before.
That's interesting. I was wondering why there was zero kids in our co-curriculars from the homeschool.
All right. Move on to recommendations to approve district HVAC projects.
And again, Mike Hutchinson is here. I'll kind of provide a preview, and then if, if Eric and Mike have any, everything, anything to say. Appreciate Mike's time. Mike's a pretty important guy at NAMI, so he's been here for an hour, waiting for his, his turn. So Fund Forty-Six. I just want to commend the board because you knew what was about to happen, and there was a plan to save the money to do it. And now really, it's the time to spend, spend the money. And so, in the last couple of years, the board has put in one point two million dollars into Fund Forty-Six. We knew that HVAC was a concern in the district. That was also a big point of emphasis with the operating referendum from November of, of twenty-four. That committee, so our, our Facilities and Finance Committee, which Mitch, Melissa, and Seth are all on, has now met three times. And part of it was to see, you know, what kind of projects, especially in capital projects, so that's anything over five thousand dollars, it's going to last seven years or longer, do we need to prioritize and work on? And of course, HVAC was right at the top of that after JP Cullen was a great partner with us, went through our facilities and pointed some of these things out. So in terms of, we, I've, I've never talked so much about heat pumps in my life and didn't know a lot about the heat pumps before I got to Evansville, but I think I know a lot about heat pumps right now. So we've been talking about this for years. And with the high school now approaching twenty-five years old, just like if you would have bought, excuse me, if you would have built a house twenty-five years ago, your furnace and your air conditioning are, they haven't gone already, it's about time to go. So two things happened. This summer, again, Mike and, and NAMI did a stress test. So they waited for a warm day, it was an eighty-degree day. The one caveat to this is that the building was not full, there were no kids there, so no body heat, which you can imagine, you know, five hundred high schoolers and the staff there produce a lot of that. So the original idea for this is not only do the stress test, but we really were focused on the second floor. So if Paige, you go down one more, I think you just scroll, you'll see more red on the second floor. So it was a very productive discussion in the last couple of meetings with our Finance and Facilities Committee, because the original recommendation is, let's change out all the heat pumps on the second floor, because that's where you're going to get the most impact in terms of heating and cooling on your, on your building. Well, we started to have that conversation, the committee actually, and there's some great people on the committee. I want to thank Jim and Derek who are on that committee. They both work at Epic. Derek is extremely knowledgeable, he does HVAC for a living, and so he knows exactly what he's talking about, and was very helpful in the committee making a recommendation that the board's going to see tonight. But originally, our group was talking about, well, maybe we just wait until they fail, and then we replace them as they go. The issue with that is, there's three different kinds, to my knowledge, there's three different sizes of heat pumps. You have to have those all on stock. And then you're not getting any economies of size because you're doing one at a time. So just the service call is going to start to add up as you change these out. So then when we talked about, well, let's just, maybe we just do the second floor, the committee in a very practical way was looking at that, like, but look at how many you have that are functioning just fine. So when NAMI thanked, thanked you again to them, did another stress test this September, where kids were in the building, what it proved to us is the, almost the exact same results. So we've got some on the first floor and some on the second floor that are beginning to fail. So when you see ones in red, what that really means is, there was a, a set point. Let's say it's trying to get down to seventy-four degrees, and it's running, cannot get to that seventy-four degree mark, you know those units are failing. And we also had a discussion too about, well, is it just a compressor? Is it a part on it that we could just replace? Remember, these are now almost twenty-five years old, so whatever you did do might be a short-term fix, and then you could be spending good money after bad on that. So then, the committee, having talked through it, said, you know what? We've got almost the exact same number that are starting to fail on the first floor and second floor that are in red, that we would have had on the second floor anyway. So the bid really wouldn't have changed, which actually went down a little bit. But we'd be looking at changing out forty-one heat pumps at high school. Now again, we've talked about heat pumps. Heat pumps don't just, aren't just for heat because of the geothermal, they're also cooling as well. So that's one recommendation. That's about a little over half a million dollars, about five and a quarter, five, five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And the reason that we're bringing this now is not only so that we can plan, but if the purchase is made before January one, just like almost anything else, you're going to avoid a charge of about five percent on most things in the trades. Everything's going to go up about five percent after January one for two thousand twenty-six. So in Eric's world, you can save quite a bit of money by doing the purchase now. And again, that's the reason the district has. The other issue, which is again, maybe why Mike is here, and if you have questions or Eric could, could, could answer questions too, is the, the controls in this building. So when I say this building, that would be Levi and Tris. I did have to sort of chuckle when Mike had said at one point that any sort of new idea in HVAC was probably tried out here in Evansville, because it is a conglomeration of different types of heat. Like literally, in some of the rooms down this hallway, if you wanted to check it out, it is like radiant heat from the ceiling, a whole ceiling of radiant heat, which you won't see many, yes, other places.
Whole room is hydronic heat?
Is it hydronic, Mike?
Yeah.
So then.
Your ceiling tiles are actually in metal that's clipping metal piping, and it's just heating up and radiating down.
I haven't seen that before.
Neither have I.
So the other piece, which is the big piece here, is this is a forced air, a pneumatic system here. And that is, you know, depending on how old that is, somewhere between forty and sixty years old, those start to break down. We weren't going to make this, we knew it was an issue, but we weren't going to make this a huge priority until really about the last month or so. So Eric and I and Mike and the committee then had a change of heart, because what has happened in about the last month or so is our controls, we can no longer see certain units on, on your digital controls, which is a huge issue, because especially in the winter, if you can't see whether a boiler is working or not, it's a little different for the air conditioning rooftop units, but if you can't see a boiler working, you're not going to get a readback whether it's forty-six degrees in there or seventy-two degrees. In fact, just this morning, Steve Hurley had to go manually check on the boilers, because it was cold morning and we wanted to have the heat on, and had to manually check because we cannot see them. And there's no good fix for that right now. Typically, you'd be able to put a patch in, and that's just not possible with how old this system is. So the controls are about seven hundred thousand dollars in this building. What they would do is certainly, they would match up with the middle and high school controls. So it's one system for all of our people to be, even Eric is on our controls now, to be able to program. You would get some efficiency savings by being able to program. Again, heat's going to come on at six-thirty in the morning, it's going to go off at four P.M., not off, but temper down. Same thing, you wouldn't be running air conditioning at seventy-seven or something like that in the summertime on a weekend. All that's going to be visible and, and appropriate. I do think, and I don't know if Seth, you, you want to say anything? I was a little bit leery until we had our last meeting and knew that this thing was failing, because honestly, there is no choice. Either we're going to be blind going into the winter with our controls here, or we can upgrade them and get them fixed. And we've got to do that, start doing it now, because there will be some windows where Mike and his crew, which is, that's Mike's specialty, his controls, will be able to get in and start working on it, and really won't be finished until the kids are gone, and they can get into all these classrooms, because you're literally wiring every single room in the building. And Mike's done a fantastic job, talk about a great partner with NAMI. Like, because this building is so different and unique, and it's really a couple of different buildings brought together with several renovations and then upgrades, he's gone room to room with his team and mapped out what is in each room so that he's got a good idea about what this is going to take. So with that, we wanted to make it a discussion, but also an action item on tonight. So if you do have, again, the money's there, this is what we were planning on doing. In terms of any worries for the future, Eric and I are predicting about, still at the end of this year, about a half a million dollars still in Fund Forty-Six. We do know that there's a multi-stack, which is really the big piece of geothermal at the high school, that still has some life on it, but we do have to prepare for that. That's somewhere in the seven to nine hundred thousand dollar range. And then other heat pumps at the high school. But again, we're taking off a huge chunk of this, and you're going to have a vis, I can say visible. You're going to be able to feel the difference in the high school with the air working properly and the heat working properly in our classrooms.
Is there anything we'll have to worry about roofing-wise, or we feel confident, insurance?
Great, great question. So although it's taken a lot longer, like, these roofs really should be done at this point, where we, where we think we're going to be at, at the end of this process, Hope, is you really shouldn't have to worry about the roofs in this district for twenty years. We will have a twenty-year manufacturer and then installer warranty, maybe even a thirty-year roof, depending on how things go. So that's a huge burden, you know, Eric loses sleep on money issues. Not having to worry about roofs for the next two decades is something that's almost a luxury that most districts can't have. Great question though.
We are partnering with NAMI with the roof project too, because there's a lot of units that need to be lifted and then roof underneath. So we're, we're being real cautious with all those units as well.
By the same token, in twenty years, there's going to be a big token come to call, so. But as long as the district is able to plan for it, that's, I mean, that's going to be, oh, I mean, I really like the fact that we're going to have all of this taken care of and.
Really, I mean, to, to go even a little bit deeper on this, Hope, if you. If you, if you, if we do what we think we're gonna be able to do with the roofs, we do take, these are two major issues with the heat pumps at the high school and the controls here. It does come down to the multi-stack, the remaining heat pumps at the high school. And then if you look around, the concrete black topping, there's some things that we wanna do with that that is on our priority list. But we, I think we're gonna have a really good handle on what's left in the district in terms of major, major projects.
Are we getting rid of the honey, whatever they're called?
Honeywell. That would, yeah, Honeywell would be gone.
No longer a thing.
The other piece of that, and again, I've.
I don't know, my husband's like, he's like, you really have Honeywell?
Yeah, so those are the controls that are in this building.
He works for Air Temp, so he was like, you have what?
So here's the thing about Honeywell.
It's not a well of honey we have, so.
I was like, I don't know.
Maybe rotten honey, I don't know, honey doesn't go bad, but this isn't a good system. So Honeywell is a proprietary system, which means you have to have somebody work on the system from Honeywell. So like NAMI can't do most of that work. Now, it is, you're gonna have to remind me, Hearn.
Helm.
Helm. And the closest office that they now have, so if a system goes, are out of Rockford. So we, there's not a local, that's another reason to make sure that we do this. And then it'll be what we call an open system, so usually I'm gonna guess it's gonna be a Schneider system. And so then anybody, even if we wouldn't see, ever see our, our relationship with NAMI going bad, but if, even if we wanted to work with another vendor, anybody would be able to work on those controls.
I think you have Mike a big head here, but in Helm.
It's the lack of hair it looks like.
When we saw an issue with our, our Honeywell system, the, the controls, we had Helm come up. And it costs about a thousand dollars to get it, unless that it's fried, it's done. And to confirm that, Mike stopped by. He didn't need to do this, but he came, took a look, confirmed it, then he actually went down and took a look at some systems to see if we couldn't get those back up and running, and it just.
Eric and Mike and I have a, a little bit longer relationship to get, just tell you kinda like what sort of service NAMI provides. And Eric, in my last district, we knew, even though it was a new system at an elementary school there, it wasn't running efficiently. Mike, I, maybe I shouldn't say this publicly, Mike, I don't think Mike charges for this. He went into the controls himself, found all the errors that had been previously input by another company. I don't even know if that company's in existence anymore, they're, they're, they're not doing really well. And then Mike fixed it, and right away, you could see the next month or two, the efficiency in our gas use. And then our electric use too, but the gas use went way down based on the programming that Mike did.
Thanks for doing that.
I have a few, I have some questions. One, it says in the, the quote that if there are removed heat pumps that are still usable, we can hold on to them?
Yes, I can stand up here. The original quote was set up when we were talking about doing the second floor. The, the thought was, any of the heat pumps that were actually working on the second floor, we would actually set aside and save to use as spares on first floor as they failed. That was before the last financial meeting where it was discussed that the, the better plan would be just replace everything that was broke in the first place. It wouldn't necessarily be spares like that sitting around, that's why the revised quote that was sent to Eric had pricing for some extra heat pumps if he wanted to buy them, just to leave them sit in the mechanic room for right now. And have the, as spares, and then ultimately, at some point, they just get put in.
To answer, to go a little bit further on that one, Crystal. Outside of this one, Fund Forty-Six, we are looking at just our general fund, Fund Ten, to have some of those spares so that even though we're replacing the ones that are going bad there, to make sure that we have some on hand in case. It's better to have that rather than, you know, have a lead time, maybe it's a four-week or six-week lead time and then something separate.
So we wouldn't be including the option?
No, not.
In separate.
Correct.
What's the shelf life of them sitting around waiting?
They're not started, so it's, what, the heat pump typically has a, a, one year lifespan. There are well over twenty years that you have down there. That lifespan starts by turning them on, so if they're just sitting on a shelf, nothing's going wrong with them, they're just sitting there waiting to be started, so.
There was mentioned that we might run into some asbestos.
Eric, do you wanna handle that one?
We had it tested and, and we are good on that.
We're good. Okay.
Yeah, EMC, another partner, we've gone away from that relationship with our previous building's grounds director, we brought that relationship back, it only costs us a couple thousand dollars per year. They've been extremely helpful, like Paige has worked with them, like on everything from bleacher inspections to elevator inspections. And one of the things that they do do is Tommy, Tommy came in, what, Blank and Bushman?
Bushman.
Yeah. His son Tommy came in, did those, because I think Mike had said, you look at these two areas, we might have some issues. They came in and tested it and we're, we're in clear.
Additionally, they're coming back and they're training our custodial staff, and as well as I'm now the asbestos coordinator, so I'm getting them trained as well.
All the titles.
Please address me that way.
Swop out your nameplate.
That's right, we need the other part of your name. And then just one more thing, the pricing doesn't include electric, uh, electrician for power wiring, what?
Not needed because, no, it's, what, what they're doing is a one-for-one replacement. Our techs are qualified to disconnect the power that's there, put the unit up, put the new power back in, so that's, that's not an issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess related to the controls, it seems like if we don't address that and don't have good eyes on what the system is doing, that could lead to a lot more expensive problems, frozen pipes and other issues like that, is that correct?
So, yeah, and so what happened here is you have a mix of DDC and pneumatic. So sixty to seventy percent of your system is pneumatic, that you've never had eyes on, that's always just kinda ran in the background and if, you have people, and I've heard this through facilities, where they've had a lot of rooms that run hot all winter. That's because the pneumatics have failed, so it's just dumping heat twenty-four seven.
Oh, and that's probably expensive.
Yeah, that's not saving money.
It's cheap.
And so with the, with the DDC, that's the stuff that you could see, so all your boil plants were on DDC controls. But that's where the Honeywell stuff has started to fail. And they, they're no longer, they, they're no longer commercially available.
Sure.
And Honeywell has not been, the difference between Honeywell and Schneider Electric, not to toot our own horn, but the Schneider Electric product line is way more backwards compatible than anything else in the marketplace. And so we put a new software front-end over the top of the high school here about three, four years ago because you used to have an Andover continuum system in this district. And what happened was, Andover Continuum was getting put out to the pasture, basically, it quit, retired. Schneider Electric was coming out with this new ecostructure product. They made it backwards compatible to all the existing hardware in the marketplace, so I think it was five thousand dollars, we came in down there and redid the, the front end. And all that's running over twenty-year-old hardware, same age as what's in this building, but it's not gonna get retired anytime soon. I mean, it'll run until it dies, basically, but we can at least replace it without crazy upgrades. So yeah, the, the Honeywell stuff, right away, the, with the boiler plants and I believe your field house is on DDC and a couple miscellaneous air handlers, that we'd get rotated over to the new system probably in the next month and a half, two months, would be the plan, is to get it all moved over before we really start to get to extreme cold. With the first being the height, the boiler room and the, the front field. I think that's the front office unit that's up there, that's actually on DDC that's failed right now. Those will be have back online and on our, moved over to our system front end probably in about two weeks, so.
Well, today, this morning, I had Steve go down and turn on the boilers because it's getting cold at night and we wanna make sure that we were, we're good. Things went for, with the controls from, from okay to bad to worse. Because we, we lost a lot of visuals with the outside temperature as well as inside and, and things like that. So we wanted to make sure that we had the boilers on, we actually had that kinda hardwired one to, to work, so we would have that available. So this will help, you know, just create a better environment for our model school.
Our, our existing system will run more efficiently, it sounds like.
It'll be a brand-new system and run more efficiently as well as we'll be able to take a look and schedule things better.
And the other thing about this, this isn't just controllers, this is actually new valves. Because all of the pneumatic systems are using valve actuators that are airlines to them. So what's happened is the, the diaphragms within these valves has actually failed and that's why they fail open as a safety mechanism. So we're replacing valves too with, with new DDC valves. And so there's, I believe, eighty, eighty to ninety valves that are getting changed out and replaced as part of this project as well.
DDC, digital controls?
Yep.
Were you saying at one point, and I don't remember which building, that we were, might possibly have to put like more doorways to help with the heat?
No, at the high school, with the heat pump problem that we have right now.
Just closing.
Closing doors, which does create kind of an envelope. And on really hot days, all the staff is instructed to do that so that they make sure that it does keep hot air out. Any more questions? And again, thanks for Melissa and Seth and Mitch for the work on that committee because we certainly didn't start with this plan, but ended up there, I think, through a really good discussion. One last thing, and I know you still have to vote on this, but if it's approved and we begin to work on it, we wanna make sure that we promote this, like on our social media, so that people see like, we said we were gonna do this with the referendum. Here's us doing it with the referendum, hopefully people, maybe, you know, like a science teacher at the high school will say, how does it feel in your classroom now compared to before? So we can really get a, a sense of like, we spent the money the way we said we were going to when we went to referendum.
I know we're working on the communications committee and helping that part of the website, and we'll be having like this commute item on it, it's like a bookmark, you know?
We've, we've done some of that right now, yeah.
And let's transparency, if we can build this better.
That's, I feel like that's critical, that's a critical part of this whole thing, is to tell people that we did it.
Is there any other questions for Mike and NAMI?
So are we gonna get, I mean, will we be able to do the Tris complex work before winter sets in?
The plan is to try to get all the DDC stuff that's currently under DDC control here done like before winter. Just from the standpoint of the, it's, Eric mentioned the outside air. Right now, your outside air, is it blank now or is it?
Blank. Blank. It was seventy-eight point five.
It was seventy-eight point five for like a week, and then it just decided to go blank. So right now, the, the equipment that's actually under DDC control is not going to operate properly because it doesn't know what the outside air temp, so you're losing efficiency with that. So the plan is to, once approved, we, the thought is that within two weeks, we can get that working again. And then we wanna get over to the other DDC stuff and get it swapped out, because that should be, all that stuff is in mechanical rooms, so it's out of the classroom area and that's really easy to work in there and schedule it around. And we can do a takeover of a DDC controller without interrupting operations during a day. And so the plan would be to get that stuff switched over so that as we got, you know, closer to colder temps, at least everything was actually seeing outside air temp, controlling properly, resetting properly. And then the plan is like over winter breaks, we're going to, we're working with, try to identify areas where we could work and get certain things done, and like over winter breaks, working with facilities to figure out spots that aren't working very well. And how could we work second shift to, to start to work ahead and try to build that out a little bit? So like over winter break, we could try to take over some of the pneumatic stuff that's like the worst of the worst type of thing. And trying to come up with plans like that to work throughout the school year to get as much of it done as quick as possible.
How much of that do we have to fully demo out? Can we read some of that?
The pneumatic stuff, you can kinda leave in place the tubing, because it's just tubing.
Sure.
But the, all the actuators and the old pneumatic stuff, that's like, like you have unit vents in one area of the building. We'll generally come in and gut those and just take out everything that's pneumatic, just to get them out of there, for the DDC stuff to go. But the tubes above the ceiling, you can generally just abandon in place. Since we're doing this as a, a project over the course of an operating building, as we take out pneumatic stuff, it's just capping it up to make sure that the airlines are maintained, so it just stays running as long as it can.
Before the meeting, Mike and I were talking, and the, the first thing he says to me is that we're, we're gonna work as much as we can because we need to get it to, to a certain point for, to protect the building and get things running. But we're not going to sacrifice kids' education because this is happening, which was, it was a huge thing for me.
Is there any other questions? Thank you for it all. Moving on to the September financial summary. Eric, do you, anything that you wanted to point out from September? I know you're doing a lot of grant claiming at this point.
Yeah, so that was the very first month of, of claiming, so we had, the beginning of the year, some expenses that were spent. And so we claimed about three thousand dollars to come back in, which is a great start to the year. Other things that happened throughout September, the auditors, they finally got back to me, I guess, as a, and had about two or three back and forths. I was able to provide them all the information that they need so they can do their job, I have not heard from them since, which is a good sign, so we can move forward. Another thing that happened was we connected our DPI, our Skyward system to DPI, so now we are pushing data. Before, it was set up to do about once every quarter, I set it up to do every, once every week, which will then allow me to go in and take a look and make sure that we are on the right path going forward. Speaking of Skyward, we did sign a contract to upgrade. They're gonna be sunsetting the most recent, or what we have right now, as far as Skyward's software. So we are starting the process with that, this is gonna be a three-year project, but we have started that, as of right now. We'll have a kickoff meeting coming up, I have done all the necessary things to get us to that kickoff meeting. And then we will clean up the data starting now.
Does that have anything to do with why I was having access issues to my board pay?
Nope.
Not the board pay, nope, that's a separate company.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
They don't talk.
They don't talk.
Not anymore.
Not after the, not after the white.
Does anybody have questions for Eric? All right, if not, we got, moving on to action items, the first ones are regarding the short-term borrowing, looks like there's two motions that need to be made. Yeah, this comes from Corals and Brady, who helps us with our financial resolutions. The first one is just a general resolution that the board is saying you're approving a short-term borrowing in terms of a line of credit, then this second motion is very specific on this line of credit for the amount, bank and timeframe.
After the discussion of this, or hopefully if this, this does pass, then I, I'm gonna need to have most of the board stay, Mitch, Crystal, Seth and Elliot, because there'll be some paperwork that needs to be completed and signed.
So are these motions like one at a time?
Yes, yes. Well, I've been said, Melissa, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing a taxable and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed two and a half million dollars pursuant to section sixty-seven point one two eight A Wisconsin statutes.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any discussion?
Can I just ask a clarifying question? If we actually do this and we do, I guess this is maybe more the second part, I'll save my question for the next one.
All right, is there any other discussion? If not, let's vote. Motion carries seven zero. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the line of credit specifically, specifically from Lake Ridge Bank.
I make a motion to approve the line of credit from Lake Ridge Bank in the amount not to exceed two million five hundred thousand dollars for a period of November first, twenty twenty-five through November twenty twenty-six.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any discussion?
Will, if we draw on this line of credits, will that show up in our financial summaries or how will we know we've actually done this?
I would be able to bring that back to the board and let you know that.
Any other discussion? Now, let's vote. Motion carries seven zero. The next action.
Take a moment to express appreciation for Eric and how much you've brought to the district so far this year. Take a moment to express appreciation for Eric and, uh, how much you've brought to the district so far this year and I just, we're, I'm happy to have you, so.
Thanks a lot, thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Uh, next business action item, there looks like there's a couple. One for the controls and one's for the heat pumps. Uh, entertain a motion, the first one for the heat pump.
Make a motion to approve the district's starting heat pump replacement on forty-one failing units at the high school at an estimated cost of five hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred dollars.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Let's vote.
Yeah, we have two options because it wasn't marked appropriately and that's my fault. Do we want to stop the meeting and go back in so that we can electronically vote or do we just want to voice vote?
Voice vote.
I'm okay with us, everybody else.
Okay, all right. So the motion on the table is I make a motion to approve the district's starting heat pump replacement on forty-one failing units at the high school at an estimated cost of five hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Elliot made the motion and Melissa seconded it. I have it the other way around. Okay, Melissa made the motion, Elliot seconded the motion, sorry.
All right, we need to roll call vote this or no?
You wouldn't have to, no.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I'll entertain the next motion regarding the HVAC controls.
I make a motion to approve the district beginning the replacement of HVAC controls on the Grove campus at an estimated cost of seven hundred thousand dollars.
There's motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Uh, it doesn't seem like we have a lot of choice here. Uh, I think also, uh, we planned for this. Put money into the fund to pay for this in the past, we've done it, I think, in a way that was smart, that sort of benefited us by the state matching funds. And so I, you know, this is an amount of money that could be a crisis in some situations and it's not. And I, I want to express appreciation for our foresight on that.
Fund Forty-Six, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Now, let's all, let's vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next, moving on to consent, does anybody want anything removed from consent? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent.
Move to approve consent agenda items A and B.
There's motion, is there a second? Second, let's vote. Motion carries seven zero. Next would be future agenda, does anybody want anything, uh, changed or added?
You're going to hear again from Mark when I spring assessment scores in more detail and then of course it is our budget hearing in annual meeting in two weeks.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We're moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, let's vote. Motion carries seven zero, we're adjourned.